Talked to Patrick, he's about ready to log in, so he'll join us in just a few minutes, but I think we can go ahead and start.
Hey Stephanie, who's gonna take minutes? It doesn't look like Janet's here.
Janet, Janet is here.
Oh, she's in the conference room.
Right.
That's correct, Adessa and Janet are in the conference room.
Okay, sorry.
All right, welcome to the May 19, 2020 regular meeting of the Glen County Islands Planning Commission. In an effort to adhere to the guidelines set forth by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention for the COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting is being held via video teleconference. The public has simultaneous access to the meeting. The meeting will be streamed online for public viewing through the Glen County Board of Commissioners Facebook and YouTube pages. Commissioners, remember to mute your microphone when you're not speaking. Staff will control the PowerPoint presentation. Please do not scroll or control the slides on the screen during the presentation. We'll start with the roll call, so we will make sure that everyone who was present is accounted for and that there's no technical difficulties. Commissioner Kate, she indicated she may be late on this after an emergency, so we'll, now she's not. Did y'all hear anything I said?
No.
I'm sorry, I had it muted, didn't even realize it. Let's start over, we'll get it straight. Welcome to the May 19, 2020 regular meeting of the Glen County Islands Planning Commission. In an effort to adhere to the guidelines set forth by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention for the COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting is being held via video teleconference. The public has simultaneous access to the meeting. The meeting will be streamed online for public viewing through the Glen County Board of Commissioners Facebook and YouTube pages. Commissioners, remember to mute your microphone when you're not speaking. Staff will control the PowerPoint presentation. Please do not scroll or control the slides on the screen during the presentation. We'll start the meeting with a roll call to make certain that all who are present are accounted for. Commissioner Kate? Commissioner Dipolito?
Here.
Commissioner Duncan?
Here.
Commissioner Ragsdale?
Here.
Commissioner Rooks? Nope, Commissioner Rooks is here, I saw her, Commissioner Rooks?
Yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Torres?
Commissioner Torres is here.
Commissioner Willis is here. Secretary Janet Loving?
Yeah.
Staff Will Worley?
I'm present.
Staff Stephanie Leaf?
Stephanie Leaf, present.
Are there any other staff present? All right.
No, sir.
All right, under general business, the first item is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held April 21, 2020, subject to any necessary corrections. Commissioners? Does anybody have any additions or attractions, changes to the minutes of the April 21 meeting?
It's George Ragsdale, I move for approval.
All right, Commissioner Ragsdale made a motion to approve, there are second?
Commissioner Torres second.
Commissioner Torres seconded the motion. All right, I'll call the roll for the vote. Commissioner Kate? Commissioner Dipolito?
Approve.
Mr. Duncan?
Approve.
Mr. Ragsdale?
Approve.
Mr. Rooks?
Now. Okay. Approve. Okay, approve, Commissioner Rooks.
Commissioner Torres?
Approve.
Commissioner Willis approved. Unanimous vote, six, six approval. All right. Site plan approvals. SP 4271 Yacht Club Lot 13. Consider site plan approval for a portion of an outdoor pool and patio to encroach into the required 25-foot marsh setback set forth in Yacht Club Plan Development, ZM 2376. A lot is 10,000, zero, 10,018.8 square feet in size and located at 213 Yacht Club Drive, same time as island. Parcel number 04-14555. Property is planned, zone planned development district. Jackson Survey and Agent for David D. and Melissa J. Ramba owners. This application was deferred by the IPC from the April 21st to May 19, 2020 meeting. Ms. Leaf, you'll give the report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. Can everybody see the presentation on their screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, great, thank you. So this is SP 4271 Yacht Club Lot 13, and this was deferred from your April 21st Planning Commission meeting. And just as a quick refresher, this is Plan Development, it's the Yacht Club PD. And within this Plan Development, there is a 25-foot marsh setback. And this is the property where the star is located. And they are looking to do a new patio and outdoor pool that would partially, about half of the pool, would be located within the 25-foot marsh setback, that's, that's indicated in the Plan Development. There is a bulkhead at the marsh's edge, and there had been a buffer determination done by, by the county and DNR that there is no 25-foot DNR setback that's often in place from a, from a Coastal Marshals Protection Act boundary. So because there is a bulkhead here and because of the size of the lot, they actually did get a buffer determination that they, they did not have to do the 25-foot DNR buffer. However, our Plan Development buffer is still in effect. And just a little bit of information about the buffer, there is some state statute that if, that if 90, is it over, over 18% of, of the high ground of the platted lot that's available for development, if that 25-foot buffer would consume at least 18%, then that is when they could get a basically exemption from the buffer. And so there's about 19.8% of the lot that is, that would not be able to be built upon. So this is the excerpt from the Plan Development text that does talk about the 25-foot buffer. There's really, there's basically two, two different kind of buffers that they talk about in the PD text. Really, one is along, like, along Kingsway right-of-way that they did want to have, you know, homes pushed back from the Kingsway right-of-way, so, so there was a little bit more space from view, view shed corridor. But in this case, the other buffer that PD talks about is, is for the marsh, and so it does say 25 feet. It says, "No building shall be allowed within this buffer." And it says, "Other improvements shall be subject to Georgia DNR and site plan approval by the Glen County Island Planning Commission." As we discussed, DNR no longer has the 25-foot buffer here, however, the PD still does, and this does still trigger the site plan approval, and that is why it's in front of you. And there's also a platinate on the Yacht Club plat that does talk about this potential 25-foot buffer as well. This was the building permit plan that had been initially, initially submitted. So they, they have gotten a building permit for the house, and the house is, has been under construction. And as you can see, the house is clearly outside the 25-foot buffer where that blue line is pointing to. And then this is their revised site plan, I do have a zoomed-in version. So after the April 21st meeting, you know, some of the comments were regarding showing, you know, everything that's going to be in that area on the site plan, so I'll put pool mechanical equipment, any fencing, just making sure the site plan really indicates everything that's going on out there. And so they did submit a revised site plan, which is on the screen currently. They are showing a new, a new fence, so along the eastern boundary, actually, the neighbor that owns Lot 12 recently put in a fence along that property boundary. And then to the west of the property, really the boundary between Lot 14 and the applicant's property, Lot 13, they are proposing basically an aluminum wrought iron style fence that would be along that boundary. So the, the building code does require that there is a barrier around pools. And so in this case, the two fences on either property line, you know, would meet that. Of course, the fence would also have to be tied in, you know, to the house, so there wouldn't be a gap between the house and the fence. And then along the marsh, that is still up to interpretation by our building official. I talked with our building official, and there are occasions where a bulkhead could potentially be considered the barrier, you know, one side of a barrier around a pool. So really, how, how it is at this point is, you know, before the pool permit, you know, could be issued, the building official would take a look at that bulkhead and see if it does meet the requirements to serve as a barrier. If it does not, then they would need to install a fence along the marsh to, to truly form that all-size barrier around that pool. So this is just a zoomed-in version that does show, you know, the additions to the plan. So the proposed aluminum fence is right here along this property line. Again, I circled the area where the pool is going into the setback. And then they did show where pool controls will be, as well as pool equipment. And then also this existing five-foot wood fence that's along this property boundary. And as you can see, except for the fencing that would go, you know, into the setback, the pool controls, pool equipment will all be outside of the setback. That'll be closer to the house, and none of that will be in the 25-foot. And just a couple photos that were shown in the last month's packet, in the last month's presentation. We did receive a public comment that came in on Monday, May 18th, from a neighbor, and I will read that into the record. This is a public comment from Tim Low. Dear Island Planning Commissioners, my name is Tim Low, and I, he lives at an address that I did redact for public record purposes. Facing the marsh, I want to comment on the Ramba site plan approval request for a pool in their backyard. I live on the same type of lot on the marsh and have a pool. I believe the Ramba pool is consistent with the other homes on the marsh in our neighborhood. There are at least eight houses in the neighborhood that face the marsh or Frederica River that already have pools. It is my understanding that the Plan Development buffer is to provide a veiled appearance of development from both the Torres Causeway and Kingsway. You cannot see the Ramba house, lot, or potential pool from either the Torres Causeway or Kingsway, but you can see the Rambas home from my backyard. And the house looks very nice, and it would be very hard to see any visual impact of a pool. I believe the pool will be consistent with the rest of the yacht club and ask that it be approved. Thank you, Tim Low. And these are your possible notions. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, and both Mr. Ramba, as well as David Dowdy from Jackson Surveyors, are, are on this meeting as well to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, if you have any questions with staff?
This is Commissioner Torres. Stephanie, could you show us that slide number five, I think, where you talked about the 18% coverage again?
Is this the, is this the slide?
That, that's it, tell me, tell me, tell me that, the verbiage you said with that again?
Sure. So this is for the Department of Natural Resources buffer. So typically, they do have a 25-foot setback marsh buffer from the Coastal Marshals Protection Act boundary. And there, but there are exemptions that were, that are, that can be made depending on the size of the lot and when it was platted. So the exemptions say, state that if a plat has been approved prior to December 31st of 2015, and they've also, you know, extended utilities, which, which is the case for Yacht Club, it was platted prior to 2015, and, and clearly, you know, the roadways and lots are in there. And then also what they look at is if 18% of the high ground developable area of the platted lot would not be available for development because of the buffer, then that is where an exemption, you know, could, you know, could occur. And so in this case, there was going to be 19.8% of the lot that would be taken up by the 25-foot buffer. So that is why they did, you know, basically get a exemption from the state's requirement for the 25-foot buffer. However, you know, Plan Development zoning still, you know, still stays, and that still requires that 25-foot setback.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from Commissioners? Questions? Here are none? Go ahead. Who's this speaker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David Ramba, the applicant.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Ramba.
Thank you, you know, I think what we, we resubmitted was consistent with what the questions that were asked at the last meeting. We were able to put a lot of the pool control equipment, things you would visually see in a room, that's a, it's a utility room that's on the side of the building outside the setback area. And they were ensuring that they would tuck the pool pump into that back corner to have reduced visual impact. Our homeowners association documents require all equipment to be heavily landscaped to ensure that there's no view of any mechanical equipment, whether it be your, your meter box for your electric, or a pool pump, or a, a, a gas pump, or anything like that. So that's all being done through the association. The other question really was about a fence, and under the new Georgia code, you are allowed to use the, the house as the fourth wall of the fence, as long as you have a pool alarm in. We have a four, almost five-year-old, so we will obviously have those types of safeguards that would be included on our home regardless of whether it's in the pool or not. But I think we, we tried to address all the, the questions that I had written down from the last meeting and asked for your approval of the, the site plan so we can move forward. I appreciate it. Did you answer any questions?
All right, any, any questions for Mr. Ramba? Well, here are none?
Joe, Joe, it's George, I do have a question. I think one of the questions that was asked last time was whether there was any opportunity to modify the size of the pool and/or the location of the pool so that it did not encroach on the 25-foot buffer. It, it looks like the pool's in the same place it was before, there's, with the fence around it. Was there any effort made to try and, and move that pool, let's say, to the west side of the porch? Or do anything to try and, and make the pool fall outside that buffer?
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. We did look at that, we thought that the pool would create more of a visual, the grade of the lot goes slopes to that great inlet you see on the left side of the picture that's on the screen. You would actually have to build up a, a wall, and it would be much more visually intrusive, we believed, if you build a pool with a wall around it to, to support it based on the grade of the lot. So that patio now would grade towards the inlet, but if you push the pool over a little further west, it would still have a similar amount of space in the pool, but it would be essentially like a three-foot wall right there next to that great inlet if we went for the seven-foot setback. The pool is 10 by 20 right now. If you go much smaller, you're going to end up with a hot tub, I guess. It's not a, a very large pool, I guess they call it a dipping pool. Some, some folks have described, described it as, but it's a, I guess it looks big on paper, but they went and painted it out on the, as I said they would do, painted it out on the ground so people could see it. And it was even smaller than I thought it was, once they staked it out and painted it. So it's, it is a 10 by 20 pool.
Any other comments or questions?
This, this is Commissioner Torres, I'm looking at the PD text. The, the intent of the buffer is to provide, provide a veiled appearance of the development from Kingsway and the Causeway. The lot doesn't face either. So, I mean, to me, it seems like the buffer shouldn't apply to this lot. That's, that's my opinion.
Any other comments?
Well, I, I, sorry, Mr. Chairman, that's Patrick. Hello?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I wanted to comment, I appreciate Will Worley writing the letter of clarification today to some comments that were made. And we're, we're, we're not being asked to, to approve a variance. We're, we're being asked to approve an allowable use that requires IPC approval. And I, I think this is just an unfortunate case where the PD text was created back when there was a 25-foot DNR-type buffer, which, by the way, at that time, it was still under debate if it was 25 or 10 foot. But now the DNR line is, is not in the picture. The Glen County setback has been respected. And so I think there's, this is a case of where there's a, an old defect in the PD text. So I think that's what our role is, is to help address these types of issues. And, and so the fencing, the fencing has been addressed, and it sounds like they're neighbor fences. And, and it is a small pool. So I, I agree with Commissioner Torres, this setback probably shouldn't be there.
This is Commissioner Willis, I've made a comment last time that I thought the best alternative in this whole situation would be to have the PD text revised.
alternative in this whole situation would be to have the PD text revised, be consistent with the whole neighborhood. But I understand and respect Commissioner Duncan's comments and Torres, but, you know, if the PD text was made for certain reasons, so I don't think it's our, our responsibility to correct. I think it falls back on the homeowners association. So that's my, that's my view on it. So anyway.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, just further clarity. It is an allowable use, subject to approval. That, that, that is the nuance here. This, we're not, we're not being asked to provide a variance.
I understand that. And, you know, it just says structures are not allowed in the, in that 25-foot, but a pool is a structure. It does not have to be above ground. It could be a structure. So, you know, we might be slicing it pretty thin, but I really think there's a lot more properties in the, in that neighborhood that's going to come, come to us too for this same request. So because everybody will then be disregarding the 25-foot buffer, or whatever that buffer is on their particular property. So this, this, this precaution, it's, it's a, it's going to open up a can of worms. And I really think it ought to be back on the PD text to correct.
But Chairman, Chairman, this is Michael Torres again. It actually says, it doesn't say structure, it says buildings. So I, I would think a pool is probably not a building. I would agree a pool is a structure, but I don't think it's a building.
I think it's deemed an improvement.
Says no building shall be allowed in this buffer.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments? Any other Commissioners have any comments or questions they'd like to?
Joel, just, that's George. Just one concern. Given that, that the east side of the property is protected not by a fence that Mr. Ramba's putting in, but by a neighbor, I would think that we would want to have a condition that if that fence, for whatever reason, doesn't, isn't maintained, that they would be required to put in their own fence to comply with the ordinance.
I think that would be reasonable. I, I'll defer to our attorney, Mr. Worley, if that could be part of any, any type of motion.
Commissioners, it could be part of your motion. I, I think for clarity's sake in the future, you should designate or specify whether you want, if that fence goes away and Mr. Ramba is going to replace it, do you, you want that to come back to you as, for a site plan approval? Or is that, can that be a staff-level approval?
And for the record, this is Dave Ramba. That fence was just built last week, so I doubt she's taking it down. But it was built last week without coming to you guys, so there's no, I guess there was no site plan approval for the fence that was built last week. But it's, it's now a brand-new fence. Park right there. I'd be agreeable to that kind of condition if, if somehow legal said that was something that was necessary. I would do it only because I have a, a small child living in the house. So I think it'd be important to have it fenced.
Well, I think, also, I think the requirements would be that you would have to have a fence there, whether it's your neighbor does, your neighbor's fence or your fence. Like, is that right, Mr. Worley? The, the pool owner would have to be required to have?
I'm going to defer that question to Stephanie. I, I'm not sure what the building code requires.
Okay.
Yeah, I can address that, Mr. Chairman. So, yeah, so basically that, that would be a building code issue. I mean, you, it sounds like you, you could put it as a condition because the applicant is amenable to that, but it really does, you know, fall back to the, the building code. And so if there was a fence that did come down in the future, you know, they would not be in compliance with the building code. So, you know, if there was a complaint that was, you know, given to the county, our code enforcement would investigate it, and then we would then, you know, request that fence be, be replaced to be in conformance with the code. So, yeah, I, I think it can be handled by the building code in the future if that becomes an issue, but it sounds like you could make it as a condition though, as well.
Okay. Anything else? There's nothing else. Are we ready for a motion?
There is one thing I, I would like to say. A few moments ago, do you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes.
Odessa Rooks. It was stated a few moments ago that the swimming pool is not considered to be a building. Okay, I went and I looked up several definitions, and it says that a pool can be built into the ground, or built above the ground as a freestanding construction, or as part of a building. So I look at this swimming pool, though it says structure, but it's also a building.
Okay. Anybody else? Well. Commissioner Duncan?
I, I, Mr. Chair, I didn't, I didn't have anything to say, but I, I'd be glad to make a motion. And I, and I would, if, if Stephanie could put those back up there, please. So I move to approve the application as before, 271, as presented. Thank you.
All right. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that motion, Michael Torres.
Commissioner Torres, seconds of the motion. Any discussion?
All right, I'll call the, call the roll, and you state your name, after I call your name, and, and state how you vote, either you approve, or you say yes or no. Yes is, is in favor of the motion. Commissioner Kate? I don't know what that is. I'm assuming Commissioner Kate is still absent.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have not seen that Commissioner Kate has joined the meeting. I believe she's still absent.
All right. Commissioner DuPulito?
This is Commissioner DuPulito. I vote to approve.
All right. Commissioner Duncan?
Commissioner Duncan here. I vote to approve.
Mr. Raggedale?
George Raggedale, I approve.
Commissioner Rooks?
Commissioner Rooks do not approve.
Commissioner Torres?
Commissioner Torres approves.
Commissioner Willis is not approved. The vote is four approval and two against. Mr. Ramba, congratulations that you can do your pool, and good luck on that. And I know this has caused a little angst for you and your family, but I think you have to go ahead once you get the permit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the time you all spend doing your public service and, and looking over this. I know it's a complicated issue with some old documents in the development. And I appreciate y'all taking the time and, and looking at this for us. After the pool's built, I'll invite y'all over for a cocktail. Thank you, sir.
I'm not sure it's big enough.
We can't all come at once.
Ms. Leaf, is there anything else?
Hey, Joel, before we move on to anything else, just a comment, you know, given that we're working through ordnancy rights and so on, to me, this, this is an example where we ended up where we are because the original plan that was submitted was modified as an expediency to allow them to build a house. And I believe that if we had looked at this site plan from the beginning with the pool as part of it before the house was built, that it would have been reconfigured in a way that the pool would not have extended into the buffer, because the owner had the opportunity to do that. We, we've got to figure out how to modify the process so that we don't end up in this situation again.
Well, I, I think we, we might end up in it because there's, there's more vacant lots over there that, that's, it's all going to come back to us. So, you know, it's just a matter of opinion, I think, of how we look at it. But I agree, this, this, that's why I said that I thought that the PD text ought to be changed to, to get everything cleaned up. And obviously, that's not going to happen, I don't think. But, you know, it would help.
Do we, do we even know who owns the PD text at this point?
I would assume the homeowners association, but I don't know that. Typically, that reverts to the homeowners once the property's developed, doesn't it?
I don't, I don't think it's been turned over.
I don't know. I really don't know.
The, the entire property is zoned PD, so each individual homeowner owns a portion of the PD. I think they'd all have to agree to change it.
That's right. I know that.
Yeah, that's why I would, I would concur with Commissioner Torres. Yeah, each, if, if they were to come in to, you know, request an amendment to that PD, we would have, have to have an owner authorization from all of the property owners within that PD to, to make any changes or consider it.
Well, it should have been cleaned up after Sea Island lost the property and, you know, it was originally going to be hotels and retail and some residential in there.
But Stephanie, I guess technically, the homeowners could go and rezone their individual lots on their own, couldn't they, to like an R9 or something?
Yes, and I don't know if Will wants to jump in. I mean, we, we have seen that. We see it a lot more in some of those really big PDs on the mainland where, you know, might have a few, few thousand acres that were part of one of the gateway PDs. But those have been individually coming in and requesting to come out of that PD and rezone to maybe conventional zoning, or do a diff, or amend the PD. So they, they could come in individually and, and do that, unless I'm, unless Will wants to add anything to that.
I, I think they probably could. I think one of the complications you're going to run into is I think a lot of this stuff is also on the final plat that's recorded and all the, the lots in that subdivision that are sold in reference to that plat. You know, that would open up the question of whether those plat notes and plat restrictions are still enforceable if you've changed the PD text.
Okay. Stephanie, I think, we won't discuss it, but I think on the agenda for June 16th is the museum and the village and the indoor storage facility. That's the only two items, I think. And I think that's.
Yeah, yeah, that is correct. And I, I know there's been a lot of emails going back and forth, making a lot of changes. So thank you all for your patience as we're trying to reschedule and figure things out while ensuring social distancing. So we will be back, we will be at the casino. We, we're not able to change the meeting location, so we will be at the casino. We're looking at how to accommodate, you know, a large number of people, you know, using, using what we have available at the casino. So we're working on some logistics now, but, but the meeting will start at 6:00 PM on the 16th. We talked about an earlier start. It will not start earlier. It will start at 6:00 PM on the 16th. And then, then we will have that joint planning commission meeting on May 27th at 3:00 PM. And that'll be a virtual meeting, and that'll be on the zoning code update. And I'll send that link to y'all soon.
Tell me why, you know, why we could not move this to a larger venue for the June 16th. I know there's some rows about that, but tell me why we cannot do that.
So we, we've received some, we've been advised that we cannot have reasons, special use permits, conditional use permits, really any zoning decision applications. We can't have public hearings on those at special called meetings. And anytime we change the venue from a regular meeting location, that is considered a special called meeting. So if we were to, you know, move the 16th, you know, to St. William Church or another location, we would have to call it a special called meeting. And that's prohibiting us from, from hearing those reasons. So it's a relatively recent opinion on that. And so, you know, just to be, you know, completely, you know, safe and have the caution of making sure our public hearings are fully within the law, that's how we are handling it.
This is a state law that drives this. You know, you'd think that with this virus thing and the social distancing, that they would kind of say, okay, find a bigger place and everything's okay. But I guess not.
And Commissioner Willis, or Chairman Willis, we are going to reach out to the AG's office. The, the guidance that Stephanie is referring to came from them several years ago. We are going to reach out to them and see if, you know, that guidance has changed at all since, as you, as you point out, that we need to, we need to accommodate the social distancing and that sort of thing.
Sure. Well, that'd be good. Thank you. Thank you, Will. All right. Is anything else?
Joel, it's George. I have a question. Stephanie, are we going to get any kind of a survey from TSW prior to the meeting on the 27th, or is that going to be afterward?
No, we will get that soon. And a couple of you have already sent us some of the comments on those potential policy solutions. And thank you for that. But for everyone else who has not sent comments, if you just want to, you know, kind of hang tight for a little bit, TSW will have that survey to us. We had to finalize a change order to their contract before they could get to work on that. So we were able to do that today. So we should see that survey here real soon. So just kind of stay tuned, and we'll get that out to you that, that can be your, your avenue for getting those comments back to us.
Okay. Anything else? Someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Second?
Second.
And all in favor say aye. All right, thank you. Ms. Levin, I'll send you my worksheet to you tomorrow. I'll scan it and email it to you, so you'll have it for the record.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everybody, and everybody be safe. Talk to you soon.
Thank you, Joel.